Thank you.
All right, I see Commissioner Albertson online. Welcome.
Good, thank you.
All right, so it's ten o'clock, we'll open up our regular session. Meeting today, please sign in, shut off your cell phones and join me in the class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Family reunion, apparently. The additions or deletions to the agenda at this time?
I'm right.
I do not have any other than the ones that are added.
Okay, thank you, Melanie. So I'm afraid to ask this next question, public comment. Yeah? Brad, wanna come on down here? Nope. Can you hear Mark?
Yep. All right. So, uh, this is Brad's last meeting as Commissioner, um, so, um, I've been asked to say a few things, um, why I don't know, but, uh, we're gonna go ahead and kick this off, so, um, everybody knows Brad's retiring here at the end of the year, December thirty first will be his last day in office. Um, so I'm just gonna read just a few things about Brad. This isn't his obituary, this is this is right up on the, uh, webpage. Uh, Commissioner Winters took office January second, two thousand and one, and his current term expires December thirty first of twenty twenty. Uh, Commissioner Winters was born and raised here in Lakeview, is a nineteen seventy nine graduate of Lakeview High School. Uh, he and his wife, Tanya, who's present, have three grown children. I fact, they're from the grown, but they
I think, I think you meant perfect children.
Yes, three older children. Five grandchildren. His off time, Brad enjoys all the Lake County has to offer, including hunting, fishing, spending time with his family and friends, and even dabbling in a little bit of ranching and farming. Uh, Brad, excuse me, Brad's background includes ten years in the timber industry. Um, takes some big foot, trying to, uh, figure out where he is. Uh, six years and, uh, we see him on the jacket. Uh, since being elected office, uh, Commissioner Winters has served as chair of the Lake County Fair Board and as chamber president, uh, Brad was also interim rail and negotiating contract for the Lake County Railroad. Currently, um, Commissioner Winters serves as the chair for the South Central Oregon Committee on Transportation, vice chair of the South Central Oregon Economic Development District, and chair of the Lake County Board of Commissioners and vice chair of the whole issue extension. As Commissioner, um, Brad's received the following, the Junior First Citizen Award, two thousand and nine certificate of appreciation from the Chamber, certificate of appreciation from the Department of Corrections, um, he completed the Ford Institute Leadership Program and the cert- and received the certificate of appreciation from the Warner Valley First Responders. Um, I'm not gonna go into detail of his liaison responsibilities or shared board responsibilities, but, um, I had a chance to visit with Brad a little bit this morning, and he said that the thing he's looking forward to doing in retirement is following his wife around and learning how to sweep mop scrub toilets. I, I wanted to speak that with him, but, uh, who knows, Brad may just do that. Um, and, uh, I, uh, fifteen years ago heard a quote, and I think this quote, uh, fits, fits pretty square with Brad. And the quote is, it is to be, it starts with be. Um, a lot, a lot of the passion Brad brings to the job, and a lot of the, uh, the fire that's lit, um, within his office always comes from him and work that he does. And he showed a great passion for the county, um, in twenty years being Commissioner. So of all things, he's been called as county commissioner, the one thing that he's really looking forward to being called is a retired county commissioner. So Brad, on behalf of the county, we'd like to present you, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna back up, on behalf of both of the counties, we're gonna present you with this nice with this nice empty cooler, three of them, and replace it, most of the county, my staff and I, we would never give a fancy cooler to anybody. We should start off with you. But since, uh, this was supposed to be a, a toast instead of a roast, we'll save the contents of the cooler for another day. So Brad, on behalf of the county, um, and all its employees, thank you for your service. Uh, uh, I knew this day was coming, sort of hard, not be emotional. So I'm trying to be hard. Thank you, Jake. Any things you said that were lies? What I've seen in the county in twenty years is just phenomenal, I'll go back to my mind and think of where we're at today. We haven't got to where we're at today as far as I'm concerned without county management. Employees, other elected officials and departments, everybody, all the way down to Gavin, it's probably Lake County, great. I have to acknowledge my family. Twenty years in politics, it's helped. And that's what truly shaped me. Now, once again, thank you.
I'm sorry, I remember a couple.
It's probably the hardest thing I've ever done is to not be a county official. Because that's the pride I take with everything. As somebody who aren't controlled, um, but coming, be, be an overall freak, you just wanna, wanna you just want things to be better, you know? I've learned, I've grown, uh, I've seen growth within the county, within the people. The friendships at the state level, federal level, every level is priceless. I encourage every employee, everybody gets the great benefits of the county, to stop and think back before you look at your employer. And what benefits you didn't have, and what benefits you have today. We are so blessed, uh, being the county manager, you know, take care of our own families, get away, vacations, sick leave and all that. And then come to work and have the friendships within your department that we have. I just encourage everybody to be positive about that, because during times of COVID, it's easy to get wrapped up in it. I just had a great experience with my cousin being here for a week. He's from California. They're trying to require in their own homes to wear masks. He couldn't believe what it's like to be out here and see our way. We get caught up in the negative part of it. We have kids in school, we're at work every day, we're interacting, we're doing pretty good, so try to be positive. And I probably should put talk in the same politician, so. Thank you for the gift, and thank you for coming, wonderful, wonderful to be here.
You want me to take that back to your office, Olivia? Can I get a photo of Brad and whoever else wants to be in the photo?
Well, his family.
Can I say something?
No.
Hello?
Okay.
Pretty sure that was unanimous.
Me too, go for it.
I'm the chair, no.
So Mr. Chair, can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
So, I remember the first time I knew Brad. I was a freshman in high school. Coming in from Westside, it's like a whole new world, even though it's small. And Brad and Tanya, when a baby surprised them, and there was, there was a lot of naysayers that they wouldn't make it. And I've always respected both of them very deeply for doing the right thing. And here we are today. And for the most part, Brad always did the right thing.
Brad in high school.
And I just wanted to say that, you know, you're probably the best politician I've ever met. You have a way of getting people to see things differently, which for some of us is really hard to do. And you've taught me some things in that end of it, that I still have a long ways to go, but as a, as a man and a family man and a father, I look up to you greatly. And I hope that you can continue to bless your family. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate that very much. I, I like to talk, so I guess it goes back to, to Jake talking about what I'm gonna do about cleaning toilets. Commissioner, you're gonna have, have somebody else clean up your shit behind you. Just a joke, you know what I'm talking about. And I, Mark, I appreciate your comments so much because of, uh, I've also watched you grow as a commissioner, uh, very short time to be senior commissioner, you and Jake, so thank you for your comments very much. I appreciate that. I didn't start out being quite as political as I am and tried to look at both sides, I, I sort like a bull in a china cabinet. So, uh, you'll, you, you'll understand that you knew me from the Sommel days, when we were on strife and so on, so thank you for your comments. All right, good for you.
Does James wanna say?
No, actually, I'm good.
Brad, I'm so sorry I can't be there today.
You didn't ask permission to talk. You know, you're, you're the one that can make me break down, I'm not letting you talk. I already texted you this morning, everything is good.
I know, but on your record, I'd like to say how much I'll miss you, how much you've been an impact on my life, and how much I've grown since knowing you. And I know I can call you many questions if I have any concerns in the future. And, um, you'll be missed and not gone, and so that comforts me a little bit, but I'll miss you very much.
Thank you, my friend. Thank you, Brad. We really appreciate it.
Are you sure this time? I, I might flip it off for my extra stuff.
I, I believe in twenty years, this is the first official meeting my wife's in, twice.
She always goes when you get sworn in.
Tanya is the reason I don't hate in most of time.
One, two, three, and one more, one, two, three. Thanks, guys, thank you. My Brad said, don't thank me, thank God you got me, and I thank you with your name.
I think there's cooking to eat.
Yes, mom bras. Open them up, it's hard to eat them when they're so pretty.
If you open those up, that would be appreciated. Thank you, sir. All right. We're going to take, uh, a few minutes to have a cookie.
Ooh, lemon, good choice.
How old though?
I'm trying to keep it away.
Thank you.
Are you sure?
Ten.
Delicious.
Ten minutes.
Thank you very much.
Ten.
Congratulations.
Good choice.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Commissioner Williams, would you like?
I know.
Sounds good, yeah. It's always good when you watch. I mean, it's, yeah, that is, that's the difference, one of the good things that
There you go.
Taplet, yeah, I like the taplet. Absolutely, like that's hard work, well, if I think that's hard work, it's so much cheaper.
Yeah, check out the office because the place
So, I mean, taplet is just to, to people, ultimately to move back to Lakeview, or move to Lakeview, because their spouses like all the party, forgetting we have another family, you know, and that's true, and know the name of, but again, they've got a new survey.
And we'll come back into session, um.
There's nobody here.
Hey now, I'm not nobody.
So we have, uh, planning commission reappointments, entertain a motion. Um, do you have that in front of you, Mark?
I can't hear what you're saying.
Oh, we have the planning commission, um, positions, the reappointments.
Uh huh.
Um, I will make a motion to approve, uh, the recommendations from the planning commission for position five and six for both Ben Holderman and Terry Cropper to serve another term on the planning commission.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded to, uh, appoint Ben Holderman and Terry Cropper to said position, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, the next is the, uh, remember, well, we're going to the master design engineering service agreement uh, with ACOM, uh, I want to clarify, we're continuing on the OFCA until the January meeting, so that is actually deletion from today.
That's, that's actually very true.
I forgot to mention that at first, so, okay, master, uh, design and service agreement with ACOM. I hope you guys have had the chance to review and check in, I had some conversation with, uh, Darryl Anderson, he, he's definitely interested. Uh, Commissioner Albertson, you led to believe yesterday that, uh, have some things get into compliance with, and they'll try to get more votes or whatever. Um, so I don't know exactly what direction you guys would like to go. Um, there, there's quite a bit more to it than just the agreement with ACOM, um. I think, uh, I would recommend for you guys to, uh, get some assistance with, uh, meetings over the stormwater, get into compliance with that. Uh, I would encourage you to do that right away, and then be able to spend some time and review what you really wanna ask, whatever engineering firm geologists and everything.
Right.
Um, one of the things, and I wasn't clear yesterday because I'm trying to think through all this to help you guys out, but the closure certification required with documents was not part of that quote. And we're right in the middle of closing landfill. And I was led to believe by the last landfill manager that all that stuff was in place, I don't know that it is. And if it isn't, um, it's not in this quote, if it isn't, somebody needs to immediately start getting the compaction and all those things, or else you're gonna have to pay extra money to come back and have that drilled or bored, get that compaction, get that closure certification, so that's, that's not in this quote, I, I think.
Well, I thought, I thought there was, there's a whole section in here on the review and revise the closure and post closure costs. And that's on page three.
Well.
And, um, it goes through financial assurance, and it also talks a lot about the consolidation, the com- combining of the, uh, both landfills, um, to show the total requirements of financial assurance fund.
So, I, I talked with Gene this morning also.
Gene Owen?
From ACOM. So I'm, I'm going to let, you guys sort of go if you want to accept this, or if you want just some stuff. Where do you wanna go with it, but I still encourage you to have that conversation with Gene, what, what there isn't, what it covers. Maybe the, maybe the closure certification is in agreement with Mr. Anderson, I don't know. He's done a lot of the work over there.
True, yeah.
So I can't, I can't tell you because I haven't been the landfill manager.
Right.
But I think that there's things to find out if we act too far. I, I really do, I think you, you need to
Are we talking about the certification report? The reporting on the certification?
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's not included.
Yeah, you have sixty days to get that certification, but all the work done up until the time to ask for the certification has to be documented and in place. They'll get the certification, and that, I don't know for that to happen.
Yeah, I, honestly, that's the conversation that I need to have with the, the current landfill manager and trying to work through that process. But it, and it does say that within this proposal, it does not include the closure certification report task. That ACOM won't be doing that, however, it does say that ACOM will provide a separate proposal for this task if the county requests the assistance in the future. In other words, I, I kind of read that as it hasn't been requested of them, so.
Because of the information, they didn't receive information from the previous landfill manager.
But this was a proposal that came to us after the discussion that came from the previous landfill manager and yourself, I thought. So, I mean
They, they did not receive the information to put that in the
Right. Right, got it. And, and we could, although we don't have to go with ACOM for that, like you were saying, we don't have to necessarily go with ACOM for that portion of it, ACOM said they would provide a separate proposal for that task, but we could, we could go with Darryl Anderson for that. And, and honestly, I was going, I was looking through to make sure that we, that this wasn't necessarily a binding agreement to us in terms of timeframe. And I, and I came through on page three. I think it's on page three, hang on one second, just so I make sure I can find the right spot.
Uh, Commissioners, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm not sure the protocol. Uh, my name's Nicole, I am here at the request of Darryl Anderson to talk with you about any of this stuff, so if you have questions or anything, I'd love to, uh, give you some words about that.
So, excellent. I'm sorry, what was the name?
Uh, my name's Nicole Brody, I, I work for Anderson Engineering.
Okay, are you the geologist?
I am the geologist.
Oh, okay. Um, are you aware of, uh, are you guys doing work on the closure?
Uh, not currently, the last work we've done has more been just fieldwork, uh, and I believe this ended last spring of the, uh, of the cell that they're looking to close, we came out and gave them grades for where they needed to still fill and put their materials on so they can, you know, vegetate and do the final sort of closure on that first cell. So then you can write up a closure report based on that, and then start with your yearly monitoring and everything to stay in compliance for, you know, Class C landfill. Uh, we've been out, again, I haven't been out again since maybe the summer, uh, with the new cell they've opened, because the new manager is being much more proactive um, in terms of making sure that the cell is at the correct elevations without going too far. For example, I have spent a lot of time out at the first cell, whereas, you know, they were six feet over in one location, five feet short in another location, which did nothing but create the hardship of them now having to move dirt for two weeks straight from one side to this other side.
Right.
Uh, so the new landfill manager is being a much better about, you know, every, uh, like I said, I haven't been out there since the summer, but having us at periodic points when he thought it was getting close to put cut and fills on there, so he wasn't ever overfilling. And so it can be a little more seamless and not have to take four months of just remodeling a cell that has not been used for a year at this point. Uh, but other than little things like that, uh, as far as I'm aware, we are not, we have not done anything in terms of monitoring, reporting, uh, just basically some basic fieldwork.
That's right, thank you.
Um, we actually can do all of those, uh, and Darryl asked me to come here specifically to, you know, talk with you guys about possibly getting that contract, uh, for future closure reports for doing all the monitoring and sampling that you need to do on your CDX and industrial waste pile.
Right.
Uh, not just are we, you know, qualified and have experience with that kind of work. Um, I just got my professional geology license very recently, uh, which now opens us up to, uh, more seamlessly and officially do this work. Um, but most importantly, we are a local firm. So even if, you know, our costs are exactly the same, and in my experiences now in Lakeview, our costs are always lower than anybody else's I've seen, uh, but there's no travel cost at this point, you know, we are a five minute drive to the landfill, whereas I am not sure where your current company is out of. But if they're coming down, you know, quarterly to do these samplings, that's X amount of driving time, work time, to then the actual work that you need them to accomplish, but you're, you're going to pay more just for the transportation unto itself. Um, as well as if you, you know, need something, there's a phone call, and then you have to arrange the site visit and the travel and all of that, whereas we're a phone call and we're there.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Darryl, I've talked to Darryl last night, he mentioned that he's having geologists now. Now I know who the geologist is.
Sorry, I'm still looking for that one spot.
Yeah, I, oh, okay. And if you want to continue this until this afternoon, to be able to do some research, or whatever you would like to do?
Well, I mean, it does say right in here, as far as the change of orders, the parties may at any time, uh, by written agreement, make changes in the services, project schedule, compensation, and or terms and conditions at any point in time. So because this isn't necessarily a binding contract, we're already in an agreement with them. And I kind of felt like this was kind of a meeting in the middle way of trying to bring us to, uh, or, uh, some sort of an agreement early on, after you had told us in the previous meeting that you were kind of stepping aside, you were wanting us to, to, to step in and kind of take, take over the reins on this. So in the last week, we met, we tried to discuss what we were going to do, and we moved forward with some decisions and where we were headed. Um, but this agreement has to be in place in order to get us back into compliance. Some sort of an agreement has to be made. Now, we can definitely put up for an R and P, and I, granted, if it saves us money as a county, I definitely wanna go that route and give that work to someone that's more local. Um, but right now, I thought that we were just really looking to amend a contract that we already had in place, uh, to try and get, to see if we could get that scope of work, um, taken care of within the agreement that we already had in place. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at, is just trying to fix this up and make sure that our landfill manager has the support that he needs right now, and then, because that's kind of what DDQ is waiting on. But then I think we can def- we should definitely need to look at going out and looking if we can do this cheaper, do work with the locals. I know Darryl Anderson's been out there before in past years and done a lot of work on the landfill.
Yes.
So, anyway, that's just kind of where I'm at, if you, you were kind of asking where our heads were at.
So, so I, I do, where, where we're at today. So, so I, I do, where, where we're at today, I tried to bring this forward almost three weeks ago or further, it's in an email, if you guys wanted to have it on the agenda. That's whenever I wanted to.
Yeah, I did make on the agenda then.
I got no response, that's whenever I wanted to talk about the options.
We talked a little bit.
The, the options that you guys could have. For Brad.
Mm-hmm.
You guys made a decision. How maybe it evolved.
Yeah, I.
Special meeting on a remote vacation.
Well, Commissioner.
Absolutely.
No, no, no one tried to do anything.
So you guys, you just said, you guys are figuring out how you're going to do it. So, there you have it.
Yeah, we do. I guess, yeah, all right, thank you. Um, are you entertaining a motion on anything?
I, uh, I still highly recommend, because more than one quote, I highly recommend that that was mine. Intent, three weeks ago, it was intent, whenever, um, I sat down, I know what, DEQ and Buddy, I sat down, and that was Gene. The intent was to bring it to the board, have some discussions. Did not happen, so we're wrapped today. So, obviously, you guys already have a plan. You just mentioned that, that you guys talked to me and made some decision, make your decision.
Okay. Uh, it's, it's hard for me, Commissioner, I'm like, I'm kind of struggling as to if, if there's really some hard feelings over some of this. And, because I really felt like I was pulling this together to have some honest conversation with you and my full board on the whole, the whole issue. I, I, I didn't know that you weren't going to be able to attend this special session that we had to pull together, but we had to act. And you told us that we had to act.
Commissioner, uh, respect, I wanted to get into.
Okay.
Because of prior hours.
I didn't, I didn't.
All the years of being involved in landfill, I'm getting towards that today. I was not even brought to the move up to you guys working to be the interim. Nor did the person that's gonna be the interim ever come to talk to me about it. And then my first day of vacation, that special meeting, without me having any knowledge, other than the HR mentioned one thing just before I left. So it has the sensation and the feel that it's already decided and it didn't matter what my opinion was.
It's not, but that's my.
Right now.
Okay.
And if you want to get into further discussion, I will get into a much deeper discussion about it. But my ownership and not my fill, and it being able to stay functioning for Lake County and keeping the price down and keeping it going, is important to me.
I understand that and I, and I don't think that that's not our goal either.
And if you remember, whenever we put the burden of extra duties on another department head, all three of us, when we took the burden off that department head, said it's too much to do it all. And now the decision has been made to do, have somebody that's not a big full-time woman, you know, basically part-time. That landfill is that important to, to me, that I believe it deserves full-time person, that's my opinion.
Right.
Not my decision.
I, I respect your opinion, I, I've, I've tried to be respectful of this through the whole process, I apologize if it, it's given an appearance of anything otherwise. I, I, I really, I, I'm, I'm hesitant if, if you don't wanna go down to have any deeper discussion on this. I'm, I don't know what you want exactly as far as discussion, if you're, that's what you're comfortable with.
I'm giving you options.
Yeah.
Giving you options, trying to, to get you to understand there's a whole lot to that landfill.
And we understand that.
And this is a seventy-five thousand dollar cost. Nobody said for that coming out, are you gonna pay for it? Nobody's told me about the long-term plan for the operation of the landfill, which I get it, I'm on my way out of it. But when you have that kind of ownership and you've got it to where it's at with your employees and with other things, it's unusual to not take advantage of the experience or the knowledge. So, that, that's what it is. So, your options are, you have an ACOM scope of work. You can accept all of it and sign it. And then I would say that you're committed for those things and that scope of work, if they're done, I don't know if you can. You said very well, you signed this on that scope of work and say, well, I don't want you to do that scope of work, I'm gonna have this one do that scope of work. That's a legal question I can't answer. How binding that gets. I think that, right now, you really need to, as Commissioner, sit down and call DEQ. Sit down and talk to Gene, sit down to talk to a lot of the firms that are out there and find out what your options are in the interest of financial interest and business and compliance. My knowledge right now is, the biggest one is the lack of reporting on the stormwater, threatening compliance, getting the backlog done and getting that covered. It's the best of my knowledge.
Mm-hmm.
But if you sit down with the DEQ, I would recommend that as Commissioner, you make that call. So you understand, because I, I, I've done a lot, I've talked with them, but I don't fully understand any. And I don't believe that you and Mark and even your, your new interim, um, director has a grasp on it. So.
Well. I appreciate the discussion. Uh, Commissioner Alberston, do you have anything to say? Any, any, uh, any comments?
Well. I think we rabbit hole thinking that we had that meeting without Brad on purpose, 'cause that's ridiculous. I'm not even gonna comment on that anymore. Um, we have to do what we need to do in the interim. Um, Brad brought up some great points as far as, um, getting another quote and, um, I think we do need to get other quotes, but in the interim, since we already are working with ACOM, I think we need to use that to fulfill the immediate need and then put out for quotes, so I guess I'm kind of in the middle on this deal. And so, um, I would make a motion that we use, uh, ACOM in the interim until we get a scope of work and what we need exactly done. And then, um, Anderson Engineering can, um, put in for it or anybody else for that matter, and we'll go from there. But the interim, we could use ACOM and, I don't know, or even ask, ask, uh, Anderson Engineering if they wanna push out at specific things, we need to get our ducks in a row and get online and, and with the DEQ and find exactly what they want done first and then go from there.
Commissioner, Alberston, you make a lot of sense, um, it's, you said it a little bit better than me. It's addressing and taking care of the immediate need to be able to give you guys time enough to research while your longer, long-range plan and needs are and be able to do just on getting a scope of, whatever your scope of work is, putting that out there so that you get more than one quote in all fairness for public dollars. I, I think you nailed it, is you have immediate needs for the ACOM or Daryl, you find out what the immediate need is. Get that done, give you some breathing room, have your interim, uh, department head lay out the scope of work for the operation of the landfill with a one, three, five-year plan, which is necessary anyways. Find out on your closure and all those things, but you, you're making a lot of sense. Take care of the immediate need so that you can get your scope of work for your long-term vision. That has to be done with the landfill, has to be done.
Brad, is that your second?
Yeah, because we had a motion on the table, are you seconding?
Uh, as far as, no, I, I'm, I didn't hear that he said second.
Oh, no, no, he was, he was saying that he would make a motion, so I wasn't sure, it was a long motion.
I heard a lot of talk, I didn't know if it was an actual motion, um, I was agreeing with the direction he was going. Was that.
I, I, I did make a motion and I'll shorten it. Um, I would make a motion that we use ACOM for the immediate need and put out for bid or whatever, uh, you wanna call it, for the scope of work. Um, we could even ask Anderson Engineering to help us with the immediate need also. And, uh, but if the long-range plan is put on contract for, um, our long-range scope of work. So I guess that's a long skill, but.
So, um, so are, are, are you making a motion to approve the agreement with ACOM? Or to go out?
When, when does the ACOM thing have to be signed by?
Well, it doesn't have to be signed at all. Um, it, it's just a matter of getting the assistance and the boots on the ground to help our landfill manager to get in what he needs to, to move forward. In the interim and, you know, the immediate need, this need to be met in order to get us back into compliance with DEQ.
So, and I, I heard you say two different things, or two different options, I guess.
I, I put, I, I'm, I'm asking the question as far as what the motion was, I guess, so I, is that or? I guess the motion wasn't clear.
So, I sort of heard that, that you were, for the immediate need, was able to use your interim director, use ACOM or Daryl Anderson? Uh, for the immediate need, given you gotta give it time enough to do the research for the scope, is that, that sort of one?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
Is that what you were saying, Mark?
We already have a contract with ACOM for sixty thousand dollars.
Right.
And so, we could use them or Anderson, Anderson Engineering for the immediate need. And Mr. Berman's gonna have to, uh, tell us what that immediate need is and I did talk to him on the phone last night. He is working with DEQ and he knows what that immediate need is. So he could just line it up with them to, uh, whoever he seems, feels fits that need. And, and then he'll put in for a scope of work for the long-range goals of the landfill.
So you're, you're not really looking for a motion, you're looking for a direction to the interim director to use either whoever he researches with to get it done and then he will put together a scope of work for quotes? Did I?
Correct.
Okay, I, what I.
Can I interject something?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Uh, so as far as my understanding, the immediate need has to do with the stormwater plan to get that into compliance as well as the closure report for the first cell. And then the long-term need involves your sampling that you'll have to do for a couple of years with the closed site to keep that in compliance as well as with your CDX file and just feature water sampling that needs to happen. So as far as the stormwater plan and the closure report goes, we've designed all of those, I know we designed that stormwater basin. Um, so we have all the drawings, we have all of the fieldwork basically already done just because we've been out there so much, less maybe a couple of new pictures. Uh, that's something that if you did wanna hire us to do, I can probably have your stormwater plan written in about a week. Uh, the other big benefit, and the same thing with the closure, you know, that'll take a little longer because we would have to do some more fieldwork, collect some data for it. But we can, we can pull the trigger as soon as you guys want to do that. The other bonus, um, and I know this from other jobs that we work on that have similar skips, uh, Daryl is very good about giving you guys the support. So for example, if you have this big final DEQ phone call to find out exactly what they're gonna require for us to get back in compliance and on the right step, I guarantee if you want it, I'm more than happy to sit in on that phone call with you guys and sort of help answer more technical language or just questions about the science that will just make it a little more, uh, efficient and seamless for you guys to then put together a plan on what you need. Um, with ACOM, like I said, I don't know anything about that company nor where they're from, but I know they're not here. So it's a little harder and generally less frequent that you would have a representative that would come sit with you or they would charge you money for it. That's generally included in our services if you're hiring us to do this, to do that, is that you'll have all full support, i.e., you know, me, to help you guys out through the sort of planning process with anything technical.
Have, have you spoken with Dave Berman?
No.
Okay, well, I would, before you leave here, I'd like to make sure that you and Dave Berman get a chance to sit down and discuss some of this.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, uh, gave Mr. Anderson, Dave Berman's cell phone.
I believe, I believe Mr. Berman has spoken with Mr. Anderson several times prior.
Well, Mr. Anderson told me last night that he reached out to Mr. Berman, but he came to the interim, but after a background.
With no discussion? Uh, as of when?
Uh, that was last night at.
Reached out to him last night?
I did.
No, but Mr. Anderson reached out to Dave Berman last night?
He, oh, whatever, you got to find the day of the interim.
Well, I, I don't know what that's all about, um.
So it, it, it sounds like it's relatively simple. We have some.
Clear as night.
We have some internal, um, things that we're struggling with, maybe struggling with. But the option is, is for your interim director to be able to work with either company. Whoever can get this done fastest, out of thirty days we have with DEQ to get in compliance on the stormwater or whatever else there is. Your interim director can find that out and use either one of them, whichever one seems to be able to get it done the fastest or whatever. Give you time enough for a scope of work for.
But I, that's kind of what this was. This, this is, this is what this agreement is, in, in, in the interim, in, in best-case scenario, to try and move us forward. Because this is all that we have on our agenda today. This is what we're discussing, is the actual agreement. And we, we've gone to try and look at some of the other options out there and that's, that's good, it's good that we're having this discussion. But in the end, the agreement that we have in front of us is with a company that we already have an agreement with to do a lot of these things and we're just asking them to do a little bit more. And it does increase the cost, but.
So.
I, 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 I don't, I don't know if we're actually in disagreement, I, I, that's what I'm kind of puzzled by.
What kind of agreement do we have with, uh, Mr. Anderson's firm that goes out there and does all this work?
Well, like was pointed out, like, we have done some of, they, they haven't been out there for quite a while. But, uh, we have had agreements in the past and we wanna go back that route possibly, so, uh, I'm just, I'm confused as to whether or not we actually are in any kind of disagreement at all. I mean, we have, we have the, the contract here, yes, but we can change this at any point in time. And we can still work with Daryl Anderson to do the things that aren't included in this, in, in this, uh, proposal. Yeah.
Yeah, there, there's no contract with either one of them right now. And so what I believe, we just need to, uh, have, have Mr. Berman line it up. Who needs to do the work, get a price and go.
Right, but I see that, uh, my understanding was the. Right, but I see that, uh, my understanding was DEQ was wanting to have this agreement in place. That this was going to help us get back into compliance.
DEQ.
If they were willing to do these things.
DEQ supports.
Yes.
Support having. A professional engineered firm.
Oh, absolutely.
To do the things to stay in compliance. Um. Because of we haven't been able to hire somebody that has those expertise. Uh, whatever, maybe you guys, maybe you guys are not gonna hire somebody as a full-time manager. But. If you do. I believe you should, but if you do. On that job, you can ask for them to have some of these. Skills or ability of education. If not. Maybe you do use an engineering firm geologist or whatever for a certain amount of time. And you take some of that off as that person gets the education to be able to do those for them. I think today's world with landfills and as hard as we work to be able to dump in the ground with this new permit. That you don't have a choice but to have a lot of help on the DEQ compliance side. But it's not required to have. Have to have it all done by an engineer firm. I mean. It depends on the person's skills and education or things that they're doing directly. Your, your loss out there. But it is not. A requirement to use. Support. Because for DEQ, finding that, finding DEQ.
Well, all of our, all of our. Global state failures, but all of our things that are. Causing us some trouble is our reporting and. For right now, we need to have somebody else doing it until we figure out. If we're gonna continue to do that or if we're going to do it ourselves, which I'm assuming. We'll have somebody else do it. We just don't know who that person is. But for the interim, I wanna give Dave. Mr. Berman the opportunity to use whatever firm he wants. To get us in compliance. And so. And then put out for bid the rest of the scope of work.
Only because of the holidays, but I could have a stormwater report done by the first week of the year.
Well, I, I'm gonna be straight on this.
For your knowledge.
I'm gonna be straight, straight on this, which I appreciate that, um, the other firm isn't able to sit there and say what they can do. We, we have to find out really what we need. So you're, you're talking one direction that may not be part of our work.
That is very possible.
Our skills and our knowledge may not, there may be more to it. So I, I, I think that's what we've got to find out. Um, what we've had is a turnover on directors and we have an interim, so we have to find out. What is required of us right now. And the, the timeframe that DEQ gave us. And to my knowledge, it is on stormwater site. And, uh, we're, we'll probably end up with a fine because of. We aren't in compliance because these, these quarterly forums, the things never got turned in. Um, so I know that one for sure, but I'm sure there's probably some other ones. If that one was. But, so. Uh, so we have. Mr. Albertson, as far as, and I, I'm sorry to continue to. Push one way or the other. I believe that you're making some sense. There's options. Um, we obviously called but needed Anderson. We do have an agreement with ACOM already. And it's for the environmental and groundwater, um. Certifications that. Um, and I think that's around forty thousand dollars a year. We do have that agreement in place, so that means they're the ones doing that.
That's for the environmental monitoring plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so that is in place. I don't know whenever it comes up. But. Your theory on this, or your, uh, theory, your suggestion on this other. Would give you guys time. To pull things together. And have your director pull things together. And, uh, makes sense.
Okay. So. There's a motion on the table. I don't think we've had a second yet. For the discussion.
So the mo, so the motion is, is to have the directory use whoever. ACOM or whoever. And then. Bring back the full scope of work necessary, or a lot of necessary. I, I, the, the motion sort of. I wanna second it, but I'm not clear on that exact motion.
Well, I guess that, that, are we making a motion to approve the, uh, the agreement? Or are we making a motion to send it back that Dave do more research?
We, we don't have to approve the agreement. We've already had an agreement.
Right, it's just an amendment to it.
Well. I mean, we don't have to have agreement with who, no matter who we use. I'm just.
Well.
My mo, is to give. My motion is to give Dave the ability and freedom. To use ACOM or whoever, whom he wishes.
Okay.
To get the immediate need taken care of. And.
Okay.
And then we'll make a contract for the full scope of work once we get our docs in there.
Second your motion. Discussion, motion's been debated, seconded. Further discussion? I think we have a lot of discussion before we move on.
Well, that's, that was, that was a point of order. I did, I just didn't wanna like. Bring it up because we were having discussion, but.
Yeah.
Um.
I think, I think we have to have the discussion to get to the motion. But yes, uh, and further discussion?
None for me. It would get out too long.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Chair votes, I, motion carries. Uh, so, um.
Before you leave, I, I do wanna make sure that you and Dave Berman have a chance to meet and speak.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Can I, Nicole's last name for the record?
Um, it's Brody, B.R.A.U.D.Y.
Our meetings usually aren't contentious like this.
Oh, that's fine.
Um, the goal is to get the best services for our community out there and all three committees are fully onboard on that. So just some, some growing paint. Um, next item. Meeting minutes.
Uh, I do have something on the meeting minutes. Um, going back to the regular session that we had. On the, uh, I think it was the second. Um. At the very end on page five, Commissioner Albertson made a motion to remove the bridge completely. I'm sure. Commissioner Albertson, you'll appreciate this. Um. So to remove the bridge completely and after removal of the bridge, the road will be vacated. Vice Chair Williams seconded, and there were three As for that motion. I'm just pointing that out. Um, but. I'm, I'm curious, did we actually make, did Commissioner Albertson make an actual motion to move, remove the bridge? Or did he amend his previous motion before that? Because we had given the landowner an option of keeping the bridge. Um. As it was. I think his original motion was to vacate the road and leave the bridge as is.
Yeah.
And so that motion was on the table and, uh, I, I believe I had seconded. Mr. Blay then said that he would not accept liability for the bridge and believed it unfair to impose the bridge on in, on invalid woman. Further discussion on appropriate and acceptable bridge conditions. And then Commissioner Albertson made a motion. So we already had a motion on the table. I believe it was an amended motion.
I believe you're correct.
Right.
So, so what I did was I made a motion with an option for him, remember?
Right.
I. I stuck my foot in it and gave him an option and so. So the option, each, or he chose option B.
Right, yeah, I, I guess the way it's worded though, I'm just trying to make sure that we're following Robert's rule of order and.
Yeah, I, I, you're James.
If, 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 I, I think our minutes should reflect that you had amended your motion because. You, even if you did give several options, your final motion or your amended motion did not have an additional option.
Exactly.
So.
You're correct.
Okay. So I, I would ask that the minutes reflect that. That's all I have.
So you're making a motion to accept all the minutes with the corrections on.
I, yes, I would make, make a motion to accept the minutes from December one and December two of two thousand twenty. Um, with, uh, one adjustment on page five of the minutes to amend that it was an actual. Um. Mo, uh, amended motion. Not a new motion.
I'll second that motion. Motion's been made. Seconded. Further discussion? All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Well, I'm sorry, Commissioner. All right, so, um. Looking through this, we, uh, continued on the EOC A meeting minutes. Uh. We have our next timed item is at one thirty. So we will take a recess until one thirty. Okay, that's good. Your, your item is scheduled at one thirty.
Melanie, I believe he intends to get a call.
Okay.
But, uh, he hasn't called in yet. I don't see him on the screen.
And I don't see Darwin.
No, he should definitely be here. Before we open the meeting. You're right.
Well, I've opened, we, we go way down somewhere to ten before we get going here.
His kids are holding him hostage.
Only, only mine out of ten.
He got lucky this time.
Apparently your text means there's no reason for me to text him too.
Yep. Well, I got a bunch of texts apparently because my phone was on airplane mode since our morning session.
Where'd you go?
Huh?
Where'd you go?
I didn't go anywhere.
Oh.
Then right here, I just turned my phone off, so we weren't, it wasn't disturbing anymore. So I should probably do the same.
Just the only thing we have for this afternoon.
I actually glue my, you can clip on the iPhones, the thing to make it go sideways, but.
Just.
I'm on call, there's a hospital like that in my life, so. Uh, first thing I do when I get my phone is glue that because it's too easy to fall.
Have Mr. Bailey.
So I glue it on position, so you have to actually go.
Wait for Mr. Bailey and.
Do it from inside.
I don't know how much reading you want to cut.
I was, I'm, I'm gonna miss a call.
So I'm, I'm.
Mr. Bailey.
Well, yeah, thank you, Mr. Bailey. So we're waiting on Darwin now. Uh, before we get going, I have opened the meeting, but we are still waiting on Darwin.
Okay.
So just before Darwin gets here, I'll do a little bit of overview. Uh, we had a hearing, uh, we closed the hearing. Uh. For further comment or further, uh. Information. That was two weeks ago. So we scheduled today at one thirty for the Board of Commissioners to. Uh, still deliberate towards, uh, the facts and the findings. Uh, so it's not an open hearing. This is a continuation of our discussion after, uh, more information came in. Correct on that, Mr. Bailey and Board of Commissioners?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. So. Well, I don't wanna go any further until the timing director is here.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. I was just down there and he was, he had.
Would you like me to go check on him?
I'm actually kind of worried.
Oh, oh. I'm just about to get the mask first.
Oh, there he is.
He's coming in.
There he is.
Santa's on his way.
Hey, Santa. Is there gonna be a chippy?
Okay.
Okay, so where we're at, we opened the meeting, Mr. Bailey is online and others. Um, explained that this is, uh. The hearing is imposed for information that where this is to continue the discussion. Deliberate towards the decision on facts and findings for the Board of Commissioners. So with that, um, I'm gonna let you give a bit of an overview. And Mr. Bailey, if you have anything.
So, you know, we held the hearing, closed the record. Um, now this meeting is really set up for the board to deliberate towards a decision. Um, you know, I've. Tried to gather some of my thoughts and notes from the, the original hearing, which spoke to. Um, you know, the, the letters in the record, certainly the, the parents have. Um, given plenty of testimony and arguments in the record. Um, how they feel this should be approved and even considered in the zone. Um, similar use was the main thing that was brought up. Um, you know, going back to the original application, it's what was applied for. Um, the interpretation of similar uses is something that I've, um. You know, been struggling with all throughout this process. The, the applicant's attorney. Um, gave testimony last hearing, um, that, that if we go to similar use section of the code, um, it talks about, um. Let me just get to it. Miss quoting. Section twenty, thank zero, um, seven. In similar uses, authorization of similar uses, but it says this, and it's short, so just bear with me. It says the. Commission may authorize a use that is not specifically listed in a specific zone. If the use is of the same general type as other uses permitted in the subject zone. Is compatible to the uses permitted in the subject zone and upon the following findings by, by the commission. Um. Before I get into A, B, and C, where it lists, it says that the application for and processing procedure for similar use shall. Be as required for the type G conditional use as set forth by this work. So. Applicant use this as the, um, the application, stays in the application that they're applying for a similar use. And the similar use that was listed in the zone was disposal site. Now. Definitely heard that, you know, um, under the ORS disposal sites, not certain things. Um, but that's where, um, you know, similar use can be used to apply to other uses that are similar nature to. Um. You know, a use that's listed in the zone. So. The, the three findings that besides, I mean, I think that the, the first section I read to you. Gives specific findings, um, that need be made, but then also lists A, B, and C, which is the proposed use. Is not specifically permitted in another zone. Specifically permitted is, you know, I think is kind of key word. Is it specifically permitted? The applicant's attorney, um, said that, um. Specifically permitted really talks to those uses found in zones that are outright permitted. Uh, not ones that are specifically conditionally allowed. Um, but, you know, conditionally allowed versus permitted is, is kind of the. I think fundamentally the question that, that needs to be fully answered. Um, secondly, that B is the proposed use is not more similar to uses provided for in another zone. Um. Again, the key words there would be uses that are provided for in another zone and provided for again, you know, the, the argument was made that. Provided for would be again, something that's, you know. Required to be allowed in that zone being outright permitted. Um, not necessarily, um, because conditional uses obviously can be denied, therefore they're not provided. They're not. Allowed outright. They're, they're something that may be allowed, may be approved. Um, and then seeing, um, that permitting the proposed use in the subject zone would not be detrimental to the intent for permission of said zone. Um. You know, that, that definitely the finding that, that needs to be made. Now, let me, let me step back again to where I was as the planning director. Reviewing the application that came into me is that. I, I was probably, um, thinking of all the uses in, in any zone, not specifically ones that are permitted. Um, in the context that it's outright permitted or specifically permitted or provided for. As, as, um, the language in this section, uh, references. So. It was left out of the original staff report. Um, the staff report, um, therefore. The staff report, therefore, in my opinion, if this, you know, whether it goes one way or the other, the the planning commission decision did not cover clearly, in my opinion, did not cover all of the opposition's issues and and arguments that they made towards the reasons that they feel this shouldn't be allowed. Uh, but it also didn't capture any of the rebuttal other um from the the applicant's attorney that was provided. It's obviously not necessarily captured word for word in the minutes, but certainly on the record in the hearing audio recording that we have. But that has hasn't been put to words, hasn't been specifically adequate findings made for it. And it just as as reference, if this went on to Luba, you know, we we currently just finished up dealing with a remand from Luba that was specific to three issues that we didn't give adequate findings for. They they felt they need to remand to us to then provide better findings for. So moving forward, you know, you guys have, you know, a couple of choices. You could you could certainly uphold the decision with the record as it stands and and just, you know, kind of pass the buck and not really go into full details of a of a real solid, sound decision. You could, you know, uphold the decision, but then supplement it with more findings, which which would be, you know, near to what the applicant's attorney was referencing in in our interpretation of of our code. Or we can go with, you know, denying the use. You can also remand it, but denying the use according to what the opposition has presented as as reasons that they feel that this doesn't meet the zone and others as as they stated on the record. So I know that was a long, there's a lot there that I've covered, but I yeah, I'm here to answer the questions that I have.
Okay, Mr. Bailey, do you have anything to add at this point?
Yes, just by way of some guidance, I think when you're looking at section twenty point zero seven, you should keep in mind the purpose of what all of this ordinance is trying to do, and that is setting up a a permit uh process, a permit regime in which there's not a patchwork throughout the county, that it's something that makes sense. And that's, if you look at it, what this section is really trying to say, saying, okay, sometimes there is, with regard to a specific zone, a a use is not specifically listed. Uh, okay, what do we do in that case? Well, let's look at the big picture and see, well, is it specifically allowed somewhere else? If if not, is the zoning in another area, the permits that are allowed in another area closer to what this permit is requesting? And then finally, is this permit inconsistent with or detrimental to the location where it's sought to be allowed? So I think when you look at section twenty point zero seven, if you think of it that way, that it's really trying to bring consistency, but to allow some variation that is as consistent as possible with the permitted zoning uh uh the permit, the permits that are allowed. And then, if we need to, we can walk through the particulars that are in this section. But it seems to me the whole idea is just, let's have a consistent permit process with activities that are generally allowed in areas as opposed to a hodgepodge where it seems kind of random. Hope that makes sense.
Clear as mud.
Good, I've done my job.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. So going back over our purpose today is to come to a decision, either uphold or overturn but other conditions on or, which was some Paul mentioned, remand. We also can remand back to the planning commission and have them look at the facts and findings. If it was to be remanded, because I've never done that so far. Yeah, that's not where I'm leaning to, but I need to understand what remand back to the planning commission. Would it be a full blown advertisement in the hearing? Would it be just us asking about clarifying some facts and findings? So I thought it was remanded back to us from Luba. We had three specific things. We gave the all of the defendant time to talk about those three things. And then we acted on just those three things. Is that the same way it reflects the finding?
Yeah, I mean, they ultimately approved the application. And, you know, it's been appealed, so if you were to remand it, you know, you could remand it for, you know, the whole thing and say, hey, you know, address, you didn't address, you know, the opposition's issues, or you didn't, you know, in writing at least, and they they adopted the findings that that were prepared in the staff report prior to any opposition coming in. So it hasn't been addressed adequately, the the issues that were raised in opposition. They were discussed, but not captured in in the findings. So you could remand, you know, again, similar uses wasn't even included in the staff report. It was, again, I think that that at a minimum should should be now included, whether it's remanded or or it's just your decision, if you agree with the similar use arguments that have been made. But also, the the opposition's issues all need to be taken into consideration and shown how they either apply or don't apply to this particular application and the closed use.
So, and I appreciate that very much. We're also able to take all of that into consideration now.
Yeah, absolutely.
And and have those things addressed in the final findings, facts and findings, and address all those at our level. And then it goes from there. Because of it sounds like through both sides, we know what those issues are now. So I I'm not sure, I I just wanted to have clarification on remanding it back, what that would mean. Or I don't like public effort through a whole lot of long process if there's an avenue to to get things done. So this, this general conversation, so I'll turn to the board.
Well, I'm kind of curious, going back to, you know, our our discussion, it sounds like we're coming down to permitted use versus conditionally allowed. And how that fits into similar use. So could we go over that just just one more time for a little bit of clarification in terms of how that actually similar use, is it, are we saying that it's conditionally allowed? Or are we saying that it's permitted use?
Yeah, so so in each of the sections in our code, we have, you know, each section, article, which is, most of which are addressed by the specific zones in which they are providing criteria for or listing those uses. It has permitted uses that that, you know, those sections will say the following uses and their accessory uses are permitted outright. So you know, the the language here, I mean, it's it's similar for, as I flip through each of these zones, it's it's similar. You know, the following uses and their uses are permitted outright in this zone. So in the commercial zone, in the, you know, residential zones. So there's a list of things that are, you know, someone came into the office and said, hey, that's outright permitted. Have a nice day, or if you need to apply for building permits, go ahead and I'll sign off on it, as long as you need setbacks. You know, and so you know, what the the applicant's argument was is that this this use that they're applying for is not a listed use in this zone or any other zone for that matter. And that's why there is similar use language should apply, and they he should be allowed to go through and apply for a type two conditional use permit to see if they meet the general standards of of the zone and also the the general standards of of all types of conditional uses, which are you know, there's general criteria, general standards that apply, which which is primarily what you find in your staff report.
Which is.
It's findings for those those criteria.
So for, so we're going under the type two conditional use, we're looking at this site as far as what we're considering similar use is a site for disposable solid waste.
That's that's what was checked on the application and then similar uses, which is
Because it was a type two.
Listed on the types of uses in that zone, but but then you flip to, you know, this section of of Article twenty and it it gives you, hey, you know, if it's not a specific, you know, use, then you can you can apply for it. And and this criteria needs to be met.
So under twenty dot oh seven, authorization for similar use. The only time I actually ever see the the word similar use used in that entire subsection, they have several terms that they use, general type, uh, and they use compatible. But the only time I ever see similar use is under B. It says the proposed use is not more similar to use uses provided for in another zone. And so, and this is why I'm going back and back to this, because what you were saying about provided, is this an odd way of saying that provided?
And I'm not sure if they're trying to, our process is we're trying to encapsulate encapsulate all permitted uses, all those that are outright permitted, all those that might be a type one conditional use or type two conditional use, or even a zoning permit. There's four, you know, those really four categories in review. You know, something that's outright, zoning permit, type one, which is usually a planning director approval, or a type two, which is a planning commission approval. And reasons which, you know, recommendation to you guys from the planning commission, which is kind of an overstep.
So so basically I'm trying to make sure I understand the two things is all your other outright administrative and uses, this allows for conditional use type two to bring something in for consideration that isn't basically outright permitted or administratively permitted. And that's the whole gist of a conditional use permit is to let something come in under condition.
So, and and my, did my, did I make that close?
Yeah, that's that's kind of where we're at. It's like, is it, are we getting into the, you know, the actual language of this word and the wording of these these criteria, is that, is it uses that are permitted, is it? And when I go to each of those other sections, it says, these are the permitted uses. And then it has, these are the conditional uses, and these are the zoning permits.
So section twenty point zero seven, our best knowledge of this was to allow other uses that aren't outright permitted, so that
Put her simply.
The publics have an opportunity on their properties to.
They are, yeah, and they're defined words in our ordinance that don't actually fall under any particular zone or use. You know, it's not a lot of them, there are a few, so, you know, this is I think this this whole decision kind of rests on this, and that's why I did, you know, just just for you guys' information, you know, whatever decision you make, you know, you guys you know, can make a decision just upholding, like I said before, the planning commission's decision, which is basically the staff report that didn't address similar uses, and also didn't address all the opposition. Or or you can direct, you know, staff to work with legal counsel to adopt or to present findings that you can adopt that that address all the things that have been discussed during this proceeding.
So during the hearing process, we took in a lot, a lot of things, some of them did not pertain to a conditional use. Quite a few of them may or may not have, I guess, be the right way to say that. Happen now certifications and all this type of stuff is, that burden is upon the person that operates this or whatever. We don't govern D E Q or that type of stuff. But getting back to conditional use, once allowed, the conditions put upon it, the things that you're talking about is what you you see that need to be, there's something that needs to be addressed. So it's been approved by the planning commission. We could direct you to address those, the new information that come in that on the fact and findings based around similar use. And I'm trying to think of them. From both sides, there are some things brought forward. So that's an option we have also is to take those things that you've captured after our hearing that you feel that did not get addressed through the planning commission side. Direct you to bring those forward. Move forward from there. That's an option if you can, by giving you direction to research those and bring those facts and findings in. Correct? So that's, that's an option.
But it seems like he has a migraine on some.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to go back over this, you know, the the actual approved, you know, documentation that the planning commission voted on and approved, which is the staff report and findings, um, is.
Now, that is.
The fifteen page document is.
Okay, so we're, I I'm on page four of that document.
Yeah.
Under type two conditional use, and it's, it starts going, conditional uses, Article three. So this is kind of where I was kind of getting hung up a little bit, because here in this section, we're talking about conditional uses. But then our, then we start talking about similar uses being permitted or conditionally allowed. Which is it? Because we're using the definitions under conditional uses of a type two conditional use permit. So is similar, but we're looking to, we're trying to understand whether or not similar uses apply. But if similar uses are permitted or they're conditionally allowed, that that's what it kind of makes the difference, because we're using the definition of that under conditional uses. Where then it plops down into section twenty dot oh seven, where it starts talking about authorization of similar uses.
So.
So I'm I'm leaning towards it, that it's not a permitted use.
Right, specifically listed in that zone or any other zone.
Right, because if if it's not a permitted use that is specifically listed, then it falls under conditional use.
The type two conditionally.
Type two conditional.
Which is what our, which is what the planning commission chair spoke to as well during during the process, he said that, you know, if it was not listed use, then someone would apply through a conditional use permit to see if they can get approved or not.
Right.
You know, I as I, when I reference the adequate findings weren't made for A, B, and C, it's because A, B, and C are quoted in here, but but we didn't really you know, go over some of the arguments that were made and and put them into work. So I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that this is too far removed from, you know, possibly if if we agree with, you know, the dialogue that we're talking about now, this permitted versus conditionally allowed uses. We're probably not too far away from just making findings under A, B, and C specifically addressing each one, making sure that we've we've got substantial wording that that.
Under A, B, and C of this, of section twenty oh seven?
Yeah. Because then I, the finding goes into.
Does it have to apply to all three of those or just one?
All of them have to be, yeah, there, it's an and.
So that, okay, so it's it's, it has to meet A, B, and C.
Yeah, yeah, and I'd really say that there's there's almost criteria that's found just in the definition of of this section or the um, the wording of this section where it says that, um, commission may authorize use not specifically listed in a specific zone if the use is of the same, and that that's where I think there should be also a call and there should be.
Yeah, it says general type.
Yeah, general type, has other uses permitted in this specific zone.
And.
Comma, and another criteria.
Is compatible.
Is compatible with with the use of permitted in this subject zone, and another, so there, but to me, there's three within that definition as well.
Yeah.
On the findings that, um let me just tell.
And then it goes down to A, B, and C.
Gets in the A, B, and C, yeah. Um.
So maybe we should, we should.
Uh commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, I I think Darwin's correct, when I look at this provision or this ordinance, or this section of the ordinance. Um, there really are six parts to it, but there's sort of, uh, in each instance, two uh, two sides of the same coin. Because, for example, it says it's compatible with uses permitted in the subject zone, and then C says that the proposed use is not detrimental to, so that's kind of the same thing, it's just worded differently. Um, but it's intended to cover those possibilities. The other thing I want to point out about uh section uh twenty oh seven is that, number one, the commission may authorize a use. So it's not mandatory, and second, these are supplemental sections to the entire permit ordinance. And so I think you have normally, either there is a permitted use, or if there's, if it's not listed as permitted, then you ask for a conditional use. And then if it's something that sort of falls in between the cracks, that's what similar use is designed to address. I don't think you should look at this as a third entirely separate way of getting uh a a use of a permit. Um, I think it's intended to cover those things that aren't, that don't like fit into either permitted or conditional use.
I thought similar use had to be had to be similar to one of the items.
So there's three coins.
Conditional.
There are two sides, got it, and we're.
So.
But we have to make each one of them apply.
Yeah, so so the the findings that were made in page, continuing continuing on page four um, under the authorization of similar uses.
Wait, hang on, hang on, it's page four, uh, authorization. Okay, no, that was on the same page I was looking on.
Right, and so it says, Alpkin submitted land use application for type two conditional use permit along with required fee in anticipation of a favorable decision by the planning commission, Alpkin submitted the following statement along with the application, and then this is a direct quote as as is quoted. Um, supplemental statement to Alpkin's findings of fact, the proposed conditional use does not easily fit into just a single define definition of certain uses land uses under the ordinance, but is best described as comprising a similar use to a combination of definitions, which include the the following. Automobile wrecking yard, disposal site, junkyard, transfer station, wrecking yard. These uses were made of the property prior to the Alpkins acquisition, and the conditional use permit requested would encompass a combination of all the aforementioned uses and any similar uses with any reasonable conditions made apart of the permit. And then then the writing in by staff for which was considered and adopted was, these uses are defined by the Lake County zoning ordinance as followed under section one point zero three definitions. And then we go into defining those uses, and then um, and then we we get into um the the findings for that, which um, I can continue reading, but I mean, it's pretty lengthy there. If you want to take a little.
So so Darwin and I have things I'd like to mark on on that. We had discussion during the hearing process, but that was narrowed down.
Yes, it was narrowed down.
And and that has to be cleared up because of it, it was approved much narrower than what that's talking. When you generally look look at this, it's talking disposal site, transfer station, and then like that. And that was that was narrowed down, that would have to be moved up, and I'm trying, I'm looking, but I haven't seen where that state has inherited as narrowed down, it was approved on.
Yeah, I believe it's under conditions of approval, so I'm getting.
There is conditions of approval.
Yeah, so so page twelve of fifteen, thirteen says, and actually twelve as well, says, the permitted use shall include receipt of automobile, wheels, vehicles, uh implements and other waste normally considered appropriate for scrapped or part resale. Alpkins shall not store, take in household, commercial, or industrial garbage or rubbish, or make any in-ground or long-term storage of hazardous materials. That was twelve, thirteen says, this permit is limited to a junkyard, junk automobile wrecking yard, wrecking yard uh as defined in the staff report and in the Lake County zoning ordinance, and not to include a transfer station or a waste disposal.
I I.
So that's where it was specifically.
That's where it was, thank you, because I had to mark that because I mean, that was one of the things I was with page four struggling. But that's just explaining that it falls, all those fall within type two conditional use.
And later it does say, planning commission action, and just, you know, similar uses, wrecking yard, junkyard is, and and same with the footer throughout, is is similar uses of wrecking yard, junkyard.
Well, you also have automobile wrecking yard and you have wrecking yard.
Yeah. Automobile wrecking yard is similar to wrecking yard, they're they're.
They're very similar, so I'm just.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, but they're they're listed as two separate categories, so I'm just kind of.
And they are defined separately.
So Dar. Darwin?
Yes, my commission.
Um, under the conditional use, they have to have a fence around property, right?
Yes, yes, that's correct, it's one of the conditions that were.
Is it eight foot or is it?
Let's see.
Building eight.
Yeah, I think we said. I wish I had my computer handy, I think it says six feet and higher, under seven, it says six feet in height. Yeah, six feet is a height, but it it can be taller than that certainly. Um, it would just, anything over six feet requires a building permit by building code standards.
So in this permit, we allow it, will he have brought up above the fence, top of the fence?
Not allowed.
Is that part of the conditional use?
If if things are stacked higher than the fence.
Yes.
Is that what you're referring to?
For the height, I regret it in here someplace.
Yeah, it's not allowed. Yeah, it says, in number eight, it says, the height of stacked materials shall not exceed the height of the perimeter fence. Yeah, so that's specifically bound for, and there's condition that addresses that, yeah.
So my last question on that is, all route being done, whether dismantling, um taking things apart to loading or offloading trucks, will that also be behind the fence?
Yes, it all have to be within the fence, all operations it says in here have to be within within the fence.
Or behind the building.
It says in seven, all service processing and storage property shall be wholly within an enclosed building or screened from view uh by an annually or permanently maintained and permanently, sorry, not the four, but annually and permanently maintained, sight obscured fence from sight obscured landscape at least six feet in height and be maintained in good working and visual condition.
So he couldn't put anything on the outside of the fence?
Yeah, it has to be, and the permit is limited to the existing fence and location of everything behind the fence to the property. Where where everything's sitting now, except for the single Y that's up front and some of the remains of of what's what was previously set up out there as a residence. That stuff, you know, as Alpkin had said, would be cleaned up after, you know, court decision that's that's still ongoing, which is a side.
Separate issue.
Separate issue.
Separate issue, we don't have, yeah, that's.
And and why, I apologize again for being late this morning, but but part of my research I was finishing up was, when we left that last meeting, I was still curious on how the DEQ for that home was established, it was established in nineteen seventy five. In two thousand and one, a new single Y was brought in, which is the one that's still there currently, and an authorization um was requested. DEQ didn't have the records on it, those records were found, and then they granted the approval of a reconnect to that that system there. Um, that that's a summary of of the two thousand, two thousand and one proceedings that DEQ handled, but all along that time, the planning director at the time was CC'd, the county was CC'd, and and no, you know, process was initiated to say, hey, we don't even have land use. We need to send it through, uh, you know, a non-armed dwelling or a, you know, a similar use for a watchman dwelling or or something that would happen in as a as a conditional use in other zones. So all I can say is that, you know, my prior testimony in the planning commission hearings and at this one, or or your last one, was that I had found no record of of land use at this location, well, that's, um, there was a, there was also, um there was also in two thousand, or sorry, in nineteen ninety six, there was a rock pit, uh, Hameza at the at that location as well. Um, I I've got the changes.
All right, I know the original, the the one guy that put it in was going to put a fee on it there until they found out how bad you sink in the spring and the mud, and that ended that plan, and so.
And, you know, visually, you know, the that, there was a home in in seventy five, there was that that barn, I don't have the exact year of build, but it was definitely before um, two thousand, and it was, um, you know, and then then obviously from Google Earth, we saw that there's image of of more cars, and it certainly followed the definitions that we're talking about as a automobile wrecking yard or wrecking yard, um, it started somewhere in two thousand and two.
So you mentioned you were going back through the records, DEQ records and so forth for this property, what were those records exactly detailing, what were they showing?
The DEQ record that that, you know, I have that whole file with me, the old, and it only addresses that, the one uh, single Y that that was brought in after seventy five. Yeah, it was septic, it was a land.
That was it.
It was our onsite program records, it it's not other records from DEQ, like, uh, like, um, in the record, we do have um some of the nuisance stuff that was going on um, from like eighteen, seventeen eighteen, um, that was handled um through DEQ as well. Um, that record isn't kept in an onsite record location, and so, you know, the DEQ would probably have a record of that or whoever was implementing nuisance program at that time, I have it just in their email.
But again, see, those dates in seventeen eighteen, that's much later, I mean, this.
Yeah.
The one of, one of my personal issues from the very beginning of this was that there was there was at least the assumption that this was already a permitted wrecking yard of sorts, long prior to two thousand seventeen. So if it wasn't though, and I think we've kind of established that it wasn't, because otherwise we wouldn't be here today. What what did the DEQ ever address that in any of the documents that you're looking at? Sounds like for me that they're only looking at a septic issue with the one trailer on the site that we can't even really address.
Yeah, so let me, let me back up, I mean, the, where I searched for the most recent thing on the single Y is our onsite program records. It's not all issues that are pending before DEQ, so, you know, on on DEQ, you know, true environmental issues. You know, their office handles those things outside of our onsite program, just regular subject system program, so, you know, there was a nuisance that were um, those records were were, uh, became part of the record, I can find which attachment it is, um, but they were made part of the record, um. And and some of that stuff stems back to at least seventeen and eighteen, um, where, um, there's there's. I'm just going to give you the reference. Yeah, I mean, it, I'm not trying to say that they didn't exist and they weren't attached to the land, it's just that they weren't handled in our onsite program.
Okay.
Uh, and none of that came to my uh attention until the um, this application was made, and then during the hearing, the opposition did a lot of the homework and research, and we found that there were pending lawsuits, uh, DEQ violations, uh, and and so stuff and that stuff.
So we have a smaller twenty twenty something acre partial at some time, we don't leave it one through a conditional use type two permit, have residents there, we don't hold for sure, but we do have information there for residents here as far back as seventy five. And we also know that DEQ permitted a septic there through the onsite.
Back in seventy five, and then we authorized uh in two thousand and one.
So this partial has been used in the fashion that it has not been for for forty five years.
Yeah, there there were, you know, seventy five, you know, they they could have said, hey, it's a pre-existing home, I mean, seventy five was a DEQ record that I have.
Yeah.
The home may have been submerged even prior to that.
So so where I'm going with that is is that, um, this property has not been used for farm used apparently all the way back to there because of there was a relevance put on it, or structure put on it, and so on and so forth. To get to the similar use or the use that it has been used on for many years.
And then two, and then nineteen ninety six was approved for a an ivory mining area, um, and so.
Uh, that's that's an outright.
No, those, that should have been conditionally allowed as well, so this is the conditional use um whole record on on that, those proceedings.
In what year was that?
In in ninety six.
Ninety six, yeah.
And then so sometime after ninety six, and any rock operations that were going on there, and in two thousand and two, when we first start seeing really a compiling of a lot of, you know, accumulation of a lot of vehicles on the property from the north, which is just a one month image, but.
Not in particular, seriously, it's more limited to open up the rock pits here. So, um, the, um, getting back to, uh, it looks like most everything was covered. That I was, not everything, but some of the things I was concerned about after Jamie was asking some questions and falling back and looking at the type two conditions or type two, the condition that was put on to clarify that part.
They have to.
But if we were to push it to you, Darwin, and that's why I individually didn't, to address a couple of things that was brought forward during the hearing process to clarify, and that's the the, um. P section twenty twenty oh seven was one of the things uh that I wanted to make sure was clarified. Some of the things that that brought forward, the similar use. And that that's not an outright permitted use, even though it verbally talked about in the planning commission's time, it wasn't captured in writing on that part, correct? And that would need to be entered into, but also is that, um, this conditional use type two permit this fits and is allowed under the similar use clause or or whatever. And I'm just talking about trying to walk it through on board and for everybody that, um. Commissioner Albertson made some good points on conditions as put on there, the conditions that this was to be upheld and move forward with the other findings, other conditions, uh, that all the conditions have to be um be in place. One of the things that I trying to capture here within our realm of of being our positions is, is there any condition or can we have a condition that may be in here that is not to become a functioning wrecking yard until all state, local, county and certification are acquired, and make it someplace we've had some of that discussion.
Yeah, I mean, conditional approval one, which is the standard one that we have for pretty much any condition, conditional use permit or any actual land use permit, right?
So that encompasses everything, child, it might have followed the state and federal implications.
And here.
So I threw that out there to try to foster some discussion or some thoughts.
Okay.
I I know it's a lot, I've got a couple of different thoughts going, um. The one thing about that is. The one thing about that is, okay, so we only approve it contingent upon it meeting all the other requirements. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think, I think that through the staff, through Darwin, some things that he brought forward is I'm leaning towards improvement and shortening up those findings that, that need to be shorted up with it. Because you have to assume, compare decision either way, there'll probably or possibly be a deal.
That's true.
Yes, there would further it out, but there are a lot of them. So there's, we want it to be as strong when it goes to movement.
Okay.
One more, because I, that's what I'm trying to get, and I, I don't know exactly what I want that to be because.
Okay, and, and I would step back real quick.
Okay.
Not to interrupt, I, I would.
It's good.
To look at what you're actually approving because, and, and we'll go back to actually a point that you brought up earlier. And it's on page four, again, right in the center where the applicant submitted the following statement along with the application. And proposed conditions use does not easily fit into just a single definition of certain land uses under the ordinance, but is best described as comprising a similar use to a combination of definitions which include the following. And those are the following that I'm kind of looking at. I personally don't see this fitting under disposal site and transfer site.
And that, that was exactly my heartache until I seen the actual approval on page.
Right, so, and I, I wanna, I'm just kind of wanting to make sure.
I agree with you.
If that's taken up, because when I read the definitions of disposal site, it does not fit at all. And, and, and you, and you go down in the middle of that definition, it says, over, under ORS four-six-eight. Let me see if I can make sure that I read this right. Okay, so in the middle it says, but the term does not include a facility subject to the permit requirements of ORS four-six-eight. And then it includes, uh, uses of the owner or person controlling the premises to dispose of soil, rock, concrete, and other similar non-decomposable materials, unless the site is used by the public either directly or indirectly through solid waste collection services. Which is, this whole thing, this does not fit. And, and, and under that, it also does not fit with transfer station. So, I, I would, you know, junkyard, wrecking yard, those things, so those definitions would fit for the similar use that is, that we're trying to better understand.
So I'm, it doesn't clarify all of it, but going back to page twelve, number thirteen. And not to include transfer station or waste disposal. Both of those are in their decision or stricken on number twelve, on, on page twelve, number thirteen.
So, why isn't similar to?
Well, if those are two are stricken by their decision text. I believe they have to just, other automobile wrecking, junkyard and wrecking yard. But that's what you're exactly right, I have to, I have to write.
They're most concerning, permitted use.
Well, it's one of the conditions, or it is number thirteen, permitted use.
It's under that one.
But this limit is two though. So, Darwin, your views look like you're having so much fun. Um, similar use. Automobile wrecking yard, junkyard, wrecking yard, those are the things that we're looking at right now. Technically, it's just the junkyard and wrecking yard, um, ultimately. Sim, we, we would say that under this definition that we're taking from the type-two conditional use and we're getting from some of these other places, we're trying to apply the similar uses, but similar use to what per se? Because.
To still, to still disclose.
Well, the question is, sorry, the wrecking yard, junkyard, that is the actual application that's come before us. Wrecking yard and junkyard under type-two CUP, similar uses wrecking yard, junkyard.
That went before the planning commission.
Correct, that's what went before the planning commission, and that's what we're reviewing today is the decision that they made.
Yep.
Trying to concern whether or not they made the appropriate decision. And so we're trying to, we're trying to determine whether or not that is a similar use to what?
It's listed as point K.
Pardon me?
It's listed as point K on there, two-one-five dot, 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 K. That's what's in the application, which is disclosed.
Who's speaking since I can't see?
Are we not allowed to say anything?
Uh.
I'll shut up.
At this point, it's close to the judgment. We can ask for the application.
The references given is the ORS two-fifteen, two-eighty-three, uh, dot K, sub K, sub two, sub K. And it's, it's disposal site language. So then our disposal site image is, you know, is defined in ordinance. It's certainly similar to the state, but varies to some degree. But that's, that's ultimately what their, what the application was originally filed under was similar use to a disposal site with these other four things listed. But if it's not disposal site, these other four things were still concerned, and it got narrowed still down to just the two, which are similar still.
Well, we just removed disposal site because we said it.
Similar to that, still, the definition of that.
The application came down, however driven, the decision spelled out.
If it was just a disposal site, then they would just apply for a disposal site and run through the normal conditional use. They just applied that one thing, but going back to what the applicant said is that the proposed conditional use does not easily fit into just one single definition of certain use, land uses. So that's why those five things were listed and narrowing it down, looking at the specific definitions. They wanted to absolutely avoid the disposal of human waste, junk, you know, more household item type stuff. This is really trying to talk about metal, it's scrap metal, it's appliances, it's vehicles.
Oh, it's it.
And it's recycling, and the application did have written on it recycling as well, which was referenced in, in your guys' original appeal hearing by the, by the applicant's attorney that, you know, recycling is, is part of what we're talking about here. This is so dark.
Is recycling.
Go ahead.
My question is, is there gonna be recycling vehicles and possibly appliances? Are they going to recycle any fuel, oil, or refrigerant from those?
Yep. So, um, would you like to ask the applicant, would you, Commissioner, would you like first ask applicants that? I, I can make some assumptions.
Well, yeah, I think that's been answered multiple times. I mean, yeah, cars are drained, there's, there's, you know, stores of those temporarily, then, then they're disposed of.
There's demand, once you get the, get your license to be a junkyard and all this other things, there's strict compliance for all that kind of stuff you have.
Really be remodeling, you know, or restoring cars and appliances? No, that doesn't sound to be the case at all. I mean, it's strictly parts, removed, sold, crushing materials, bail them, send them out.
So, and that, that's why I asked the question, if they're crushing that stuff with the fuel or oil or refrigerant still in it, where is that going to go? And that's why I'm asking the question.
And that's, that's all handles are the dismantlers from there through the DMV. So they have to comply with the stores, operations, all those things get inspected by DEQ or some of the DMV other dismantlers permit. If those operations are, you know.
Yeah, Commissioner, I don't want, I don't want to talk out of school here, but whenever those type of things are crushed and recycled for the weight of the metal, there, things have to be captured and retained from antipodes to oil, everything. And even the crushers themselves a lot of times have captured boxes underneath them so it doesn't contaminate the ground and everything. That's all regulated by getting the license and the permit to build to do that. And then they are inspected, or are supposed to be inspected by DEQ and others. At least that's my experience with some of the crushing I've been around. And I don't want to, that's not the gospel, it's just whenever you're talking oils and fluids and with getting the refrigerant, there's very strict guidelines you're supposed to follow here.
So, what I'm afraid of is since some of the facts and findings were disclosed to the planning commission, if, if we approved this and it was appealed, I believe that Luba would make us go back to those effects and findings that we've missed. And, so I'm leaning toward remanding this back to the, um, planning commission to address all those facts and findings that were missing, missed, and including the question of similar use. And that's my thoughts, I'm just bringing that up.
Appreciate that, Commissioner, I sort of lean that way, I'm sort of leaning different now. If we remand it back and be similar to us, when it remanded, a different one is remanded back to us, we need to be very specific of what is being remanded back and for them to address those and bring it back to us. Right now, after going through, once again, looking at what the conditions is put upon it and all that, I think the planning commission done a pretty good job. I think some of the things that are brought forward about similar use has to be clarified and put into the facts and findings. And I, I myself am not leaning towards putting that burden upon the planning director, which is appropriate, to address those facts and findings and add that into.
According to the discussion that you guys have already had.
Yeah, so, just, or, or let me know where, let you know where I'm sort of looking right at the moment. And with that, also knowing that either party has the option to bill our decision. We just need to make our decision.
Well, you know, like, okay, go back to Commissioner Albertson's thoughts on remanding it back to the planning commission to, for better findings. Through their decision, they decided to remove disposal site and transfer station, which transfer station is actually listed in the definition of disposal site. So they removed that entirely, but then at the same time, you know, if we go back and would say we're going to approve this based on similar use of the definition of disposal site, solid waste, that's, that's where I'm kind of getting a little confused. Because it says a site for disposal, not management, but disposal of solid waste approved by the governing body, the city council, so, so forth. Now, I, I get that we're au, there's authorization for similar use, and that's what we're trying to determine is whether or not it falls into that category. It's just, we've excluded from, from what the applicant originally gave to the planning commission, which we're reviewing their decision today. They removed disposal site and transfer station. They, they could agree that it meets the definition of automobile wrecking yard, junkyard, but then they use the definition of disposal site. Are you following me? Am I making any sense? I don't know if I am or not. So, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm talking out loud with my board. So we remove those definitions because we say it doesn't meet those. But then you just say, we turn around on the same, same foot, and we say it's similar use to this though. But nowhere in there, in the definition of disposal site, did I find one single item that was similar to what we're actually talking about. I found lots of things under junk, junkyard, automobile wrecking yard. Those things make sense for what the app, application is, or what is being applied for.
Can I say something?
We're, we're not taking any testimony right now.
Well, it's not testimony, it's just the photos going way back show junk on the property. I think that was a similar use.
Yeah, we, we're not taking any, must ask for right now, thank you. So, getting, trying to wrap around what you were talking, K. All right, so you're, you're still back to page four.
I am, I'm because I kind of feel like that's part of the key there.
So, that can be reworded. Anyway, we want that to be reworded.
In which section?
If you're worried about findings on page four.
Well, I was taking it back to what Commissioner Albertson suggested as far as, you know, he said he was leaning towards a remand. And so if we were going to remand anything, I would ask for the planning commission to relook at that for some clarification, but please go ahead, I mean, as far as, you know, what you were wrapping it around to, I.
Well, I.
I'm not saying we should remand it.
Yeah, well, we gotta have the discussion before.
Absolutely.
And so, for me, if we said remand for clarification on number thirteen on page twelve, I think they would tell us, well, we gave you clarification. We took out transfer station waste disposal.
Yeah, and that, but that's my point, they took it out. So, now what's the similar use, what's, what is it similar use to? If it's similar use to a site for disposal or solid waste, we took that out, as far as disposal site, they took it out, sorry.
Okay, what I'm seeing, the, the similar use is junkyard, wrecking yard.
Oh, oh, granted, it meets those.
So I, I've thrown disposal site in that way, so maybe I shouldn't, but I, or they, they don't.
It's to be, of course.
I don't think about that anymore.
Okay, but.
How are you bringing that back to them?
Because under type-two conditional use permit, we list, it, it, it lists number seven, a site for disposal of solid waste approval, approved by the governing body. It, 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 it goes through that whole.
Which been.
This is on number four, right? Darwin, are, are you tracking me? Do you want to interrupt us at any point and tell us that we're just, I'm at a train park or something like that? I don't know.
So it's, it's here.
This is right here. So, we go under type-two conditional use permit, which was what this app, this was an application for, was type-two. And it says a site for disposal of solid waste, that's a disposal site. Correct? Because it, then we go down to definitions. So this is the, well, it says a site for the disposal of solid waste approved by the governing body, senior county, or both. And, and this is as permitted, has been, or which, which a permit has been granted under ORS, so forth. I mean, this is, we're, are we saying that the similar use is similar to that?
So, did, we need to turn the ORS four-to-eight, nine-point-two, four-five.
Okay.
Richard, the opposition has, in the record, you do have that, that section of ORS quoted in depth.
So what do you think?
So what do you think?
I mean, I agree that it's similar use and meets the definition of junk, junkyard and and wrecking yard. Totally. I mean, it 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 fits that. But if we're saying that the approval of this of the wrecking yard, junkyard slash junkyard is similar use to the two things that we said it does not meet. How can we? I'm 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 puzzled as to what the similar uses is being compared to.
As I look over the the condition uses that are, you know, listed in the zone. Disposal site is the only one that is similar to. I mean, it's it's the one that, you know, and so when you look at that definition, what you're struggling with is trying to see how the definition of the disposal site is similar to these other four uses.
Is that?
But it's it's the nearest thing that they have. I mean, they're obviously not going to be the same. I mean, one disposal site is definitely a junkyard or a landfill. You know, where where stuff goes and solid waste gets disposed of. You know, is a landfill similar to a junkyard? I mean, that I mean, that's the rationale you have to decide on, I guess. I mean, yes, a landfill is definitely different than a junkyard or a recycling plant, but they're similar. It's it's waste that's collected out of site, either permanent disposal.
Yeah.
Or for transfer, and that's why transfer station was also brought up.
Okay.
And I and I'm, I mean, I know.
Working through this with you guys. So.
Does that certify something?
We're not taking any additional testimony, I'm sorry.
Well, it's not really testimony, it's.
But wait. I keep on, I can't remember your last name, Mr.
Alan.
I know your first name now.
Yeah.
Right now, unless we ask for it, but it's not because we have a lit opposition side.
All right.
And everything's right now. We're just struggling with some legal terms and O R S is, and we'll probably have to have some interpretation of some O R S is probably.
That's what I was trying to help with.
And so so under four, four, five, nine, two, four, five. I'm gonna review all of it, but it has other things in there.
It has a lot of things, yeah.
Yeah. And and so to capture the one that that could say this doesn't fit, but you might go down and capture, well, this part of it does fit. We have to do some more research, our direct, Darwin, to do some more research on that. And address that because that that was brought forward during the hearing process. That would be one that we would want to have reviewed. Make sure that it the term similar use is very broad. And it's interpretation of the people making the decision at the time. And and that's, I think, what you're struggling with is if it's not a disposal site. Saying it's similar to the disposal site, but it's not a disposal site is where the hang up.
Well, okay, just to take the term landfill, okay. We 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 love landfill discussions, so we'll go to.
True.
That's fired. Yeah, so a dis- a site for the disposal, the solid waste approved by the governing body, and we we go down this and 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 as which a permit has been granted under O R S four, five, nine. And then we're trying to understand the definition of that. Is landfill included in there anywhere? I believe it is, but do you use that, I, um, is is landfill in there? Yes, it is. So landfills, sludge lagoons, sludge treatment facilities, disposal of site septic tanks. Okay, so we have land.
That's on the disposal.
That's under disposal site. Landfills is included in that, okay? And then we go down, but the term does not include a facility subject to the permit requirements of O R S four, six, eight. Which starts out a landfill site, which is used by the owner of a person in control of premises of disposal of soil, rock, concrete, or similar non-decomposable materials. So we have, it isn't, landfill is included, but then again, it's not under O R S four, six, eight. It has a different, landfills has another definition. It's used somewhere else.
But approved.
Right, but we're saying it's similar use.
Four, five, nine, point two, four, five. That's what it's about, because it's a disposal site. It's eliminated.
But we're saying similar use, are we?
Yeah, I mean, you're you're trying to use similar use criteria, but twenty point zero seven to say that this use, proposed use is similar to, you know, or not, sorry, not similar to other uses or already allied permitted in other other zones.
Right, it's not a permitted use. I get it. And that definitely not, so it does fall under conditional use.
It really can be any use. Yeah, that's any use that's similar. And so that's what, that's what twenty point zero seven is. And so what you're what you're saying is, is it similar to the.
Sludge in the lagoon.
Yeah.
That's not.
It's definitely not. It's not the same.
Right, it's hard for me to get my head around. I I'm welcome to any one in all my board, legal counsel, if anyone wants to explain to me how I'm, what I'm not seeing here. I I I'm if we were to consider remanding it back, and I'm not saying that that's what I'm leaning towards. But if we were to consider remanding it back to the planning commission, this is the issue that I'm looking for some judgment and determination of. And and some better findings as to how we can say, we we can eliminate several of the criteria that was given to us by the applicant in their original application to the planning commission. They eliminated those two things, those two items. But then we turn around with what's left, which I agree it meets those. But we say it's similar use to the things that we took off the list.
So James, our commissioner, what I'm, what I'm hearing is that they applied under a disposal site, but they did their findings under a wrecking yard and then didn't apply any findings to that use or that similar use. They used the uses of the disposal site instead of wrecking yard. No?
Yes. So if you're you're I'll try to. On similar use.
I'm not arguing with you, Mark. I'm not. I'm just, I'm I'm trying to, you're really struggling.
And I get it. On similar use. So if you take something, drop it off to the landfill, you got rid of. If you take something to the wrecking yard and drop it off, you got rid of it. There's similar uses, then under different compliance, but there's similar uses. So I think that's the easiest way to determine similar uses is its way of disposing a thing under certain certificates and operations.
In which case we can't remove disposal site.
It's referenced, it's just not going to be the use.
The disposal site takes a whole different.
Only a place.
Okay, so this is interesting. So is.
A using similar use.
But that's not going to be the use, is what you're saying.
It's similar, but it's not the use that's what's permitted by the.
We're only permitted, we're looking at only permitting the the junkyard, this, this, but we're, it's just.
It's not going to be a landfill. That's ultimately what the planning commission was trying to determine.
Ah, but. But see, landfill is what we're saying is similar use.
Yeah, it's similar. I mean, it's it's not clearly defined.
I don't, the reason I'm being.
You get rid of sticky junk at the landfill, you get rid of other junk at the junkyard.
I get rid of a lot of, yeah, I I get rid of a lot of junk at the landfill. I the reason I'm being a stickler, just so you guys u- understand, I'm not trying to do a hangman everyone's crap. I don't like appeals. And so if we're going to make, hey, Darwin.
You're right, I agree.
And and so when we made, well, we we and we don't do this very often. We've probably done it more often since I came on than Commissioner Winters is comfortable with.
You figure.
And it's used to. But but this is why I'm I'm trying to be thorough and trying to understand exactly what we're approving, how we're and make sure that we're following the process correctly and appropriately. And and because now we've kind of gone into the area of adopting other findings or close to.
Just sup- supplementing the findings of similar use is listed in the staff report, just not thoroughly, just not thoroughly um, explain how, you know, you could get to us on this. And it just, it would need to be a fact, the way you guys decided to go.
I mean, I.
You know, remanding it is certainly, you know, that's something I think is is going to do.
I don't really want to remand it, and that's my hesitancy. Uh, I I actually like to just make a decision to be done with it. And 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 kind of what may, I just want to make sure it's the right decision. Because and and that's why I'm trying to go through all this with with my board for the discussion sake. Even though I know Mark's pretty much sick and tired of it, so.
We, you're you're making a very good point. We need to be as thorough as we can. What we're really looking at is the decisions the planning commission made, either uphold, overturn, or add more findings or conditions. That's what our duty is. We've had the hearing across the things that come forward. I think we've got stuck up some things that are important to talk about. When I go back and I I keep looking at this, the planning commission worked hard on this.
They did.
They worked, they worked very hard.
That's why I don't feel like remanding it because I think they did try very hard.
And I think that there was some things brought forward that it's easily to let your mind on similar uses. Drag you every which way, whether it is similar uses so generic that how individuals interpret that is challenging. So I think if we uphold the planning commission's decision and have clarification on similar uses, have that articulated that it definitely is not in any shape or form the same as a disposal site. But it's similar in the way that I explained or whatever would be the legal program way. Because I intend, I I get Darwin and from this, and ten was not for it to be considered any sort of landfill disposal site whatsoever, and that's written in there. Similar use is to work on that. All three of those are sort of on on that. So that has to be clarified.
Important stuff, yeah.
And and that we we can either uphold or overturn or we can remand, remand, but we we can have those facts and findings, things added to that the verbiage isn't exact today. It is, we ask legal counsel and Darwin to put that verbiage into it, add it into the findings and facts. And verbatim, it's not in there today. Although we've done that before.
Okay.
And and I have to, I have to do same one thing, just because you've mentioned, we have had more of those as. Well, well, but.
That was a bit of a turn on me, you know.
No, but that that's true because of all these smaller pieces of acreages out there. People are asking for additional use. This one's about the wrecking yard. The next to build come to possibly be on a residential house on the acreage or this or that. There's more and more, if you want to call it urban sprawl out there, and when you have urban sprawl, people get their pieces happy.
Non-farm dwellings, I mean?
Yes. I have one myself. And so I think you will see, continue to see more more fills because we provide a lot of conditional use across all of the. Just, just let you know, it's not because you came on, it's just.
It was a, it was a joke.
I know, I appreciate that. But it stimulated my thoughts. So I I'm Commissioner Albertson, I don't know if you're still on remand. I'm I'm at upholding the planning commission's decision with a direction to Darwin and legal counsel to take the information verbal and written that came to us and add clarification in the facts and findings on the the ones that are pertinent to to this decision.
Is that a put or stated?
Doesn't mean that it has to be that way. I just, that's where I'm at.
We're we're not allowed.
I know, I just, if it's going to get remanded, I would like to say something about what you guys are required to address, so. By Luba. So it's not about what you find pertinent as much as it is. It is partly about what you find pertinent, but it's also about what what the appellant's find pertinent and you're required to address what the appellant's found pertinent. You don't get to ignore, so. We're very much aware of that. We have a legal counsel and we have Darwin, and if we were to go the way that I'm wanting to go, all that has to be addressed because there's some things that are not pertinent, there's some things that are pertinent. So I mean, I appreciate you bringing that forward. That's reasonable. I'm a lawyer, I'm a legal counsel.
And you guys are waiting for me.
Well. We we can take a recess. Take a breath, come back in ten minutes, fifteen minutes. Matter of fact, that might be one of the best things to do with it.
Would you guys, Mark, would you be comfortable with a ten minute recess?
Sure, whatever you need to do. I got my computer plugged in, the battery is dying, so.
Let's let's make it fifteen. We'll come back at three fifteen.
That's fine.
Okay.
Copy.
We'll recess till three fifteen, Mr. Bailey. Thank you. You'll call back in or zoom back in at three fifteen.
I I will call back in and I will send everyone an email with a few points in it while you're in recess.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, bye. Yeah, technology is fantastic, my Mark.
Okay, so thanks for getting an email to the board of commissioners. So, yeah, I would I I, Jim, I appreciate you sending out that email. I think you really helped capture some of my my issues and and my frustrations. I appreciate everyone's patience with me as I'm kind of working through this. Number one, in your email, is the requested use specifically allowed in the zone? It's a good question. No.
The answer.
The answer is no. And and that the, is the requested use specifically allowed in the zone? No.